It is now six thirty. I'm calling to order the Elgin City Council's regular meeting Tuesday, February the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and we will call the order, and we will begin with Callahan.
Callahan here. Rodriguez here.
Dennis here.
Fraser here.
McShan here.
Kuznatsky here.
Gibson here.
Swain here.
And Maldonado is out on medical leave?
Let us bow our heads. Holy One, known by many names and be all names and beyond all names, spirit of life, spirit of love, spirit of community, spirit of justice. We ask your blessing on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Help us as leaders to not ask first, how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind us, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that we are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. To this we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good, right, and true. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We have tonight on the first public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter sixteen, Article two, weeds, law, growth, and sanitary conditions revised code ordinances, the city of Elgin. Texas repealing all other ordinances in conflict therewith a public and provide for a savings clause.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is, as stated, an amending ordinance relative to our tall weeds and growth ordinance. Most, one thing I want to point out is that they're mostly minor amendments to that code section, but one thing that we want to point out is, in the current ordinance, the stat, the ordinance provides a provision that when an individual's been notified they're in violation, they have an option to appeal that violation to the Board of Adjustments. But the staff has recommended that that appeal be changed to the city manager to help move that process along. The Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance and this amendment, and they've recommended all of it except for that provision. It's their recommendation that that appeal stay with the Board of Adjustments. So we can talk about the why of that a little bit later, but just wanted to clarify that for the purposes of the hearing.
We didn't have anybody sign up for that. Okay. No one signed up to speak on that one, so we'll move on to the next one. And it is public hearing to review performance and obtain comments regarding its two thousand and twenty-one Texas CDVG Program Community Development Contract number seven-two-two-zero-zero-four-two. Do we have someone to speak on that now?
This is requirement, the city has received a number of grants, and we've received a particular grant through the Community Development Block Grant Program, and this hearing and the presentation we're going to give here in a minute is to present a requirement of to receive those funds. So we have our representative from Grant Works, our grant consultant, here to lead that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. Like you said, my name is Melinda Capolca, and I'm with Grant Works. And basically, what we do, we are grant administrators, who help the city navigate the very complex system of working with state agencies to receive money. And so what I'm doing here tonight is to tell you about Section three. Basically, that's a pretty fancy word for low-to-moderate-income folks who receive the grant money. So the grants are specifically designed to help LMI or low-to-moderate-income people. And so there's a couple of rules and regulations that are required to be able to see them in those lines. One of the things that we need to do is to basically teeter retire as a part of what is necessarily necessary to release the construction. Really short, it's very brief, probably less than five minutes. No action is needed by anyone here, basically just an acknowledgement that you have received the information.
Can you use the mic?
Yes. Sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, it's being recorded, so people can hear it.
All right, away we go. Okay, so basically, the city of Elgin has received a grant award, contract number CDB twenty-one oh-oh-two-six. That award was for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What y'all are going to do with that money is build a system-wide SCADA. It's going to be installed in different locations around the city. Ready for the next one?
May I ask what a SCADA is?
It's a, it's basically electronic monitoring system so we can keep up with, I forget, is this sewer or water? Wastewater, so that we can monitor systems. Typically, cities and always in the past, Elgin had depend on physical inspection of each site, basically driving around, trying to monitor if they're working or working properly. The SCADA system will provide an automated system so we can keep an eye on everything at once.
Thank you.
All righty, this grant comes from the Texas Department of Agriculture, like I mentioned. The money is coming from HUD, so basically the Housing and Urban Development. Next one. As a condition of the funding, the city must comply with Section three of the Housing and Urban Development Act of nineteen sixty-eight. To the greatest extent feasible, grant recipients must direct economic opportunities generated by CDVG funds to low and very low-income persons. Like we said, Section three basically means LMI folks. The entire purpose of these grants is to help with providing opportunities for LMI people. So laterals and regulations that you can find under the policy issuance twenty dash zero point one. Next one.
Next one.
A company may qualify to be a Section three business if it is owned by low-income persons, if it is owned by Section eight assisted housing residents, or seventy-five percent of all labor hours for the business in a three-month period are performed by Section three workers. What you'll see on the screen is a website, and that's basically where a Section three person can register for work and employment opportunities. So this project is expected to include the following contracting opportunities. Two of these folks have already been selected, so that first one is the Grant Administration, which is my company, Grant Works. The second one is your Engineering Services, and those are being handled by TRC. And the construction contractor has not been awarded yet, but I believe there was a bid opening earlier this morning, so that's well underway. Okay, you may qualify to be a Section three worker if your annual income is below the county threshold for your family size, or you are a current or recent youth build participant. If you are a Section three person and qualify, you can register for your opportunities at workintexas.com or at the HUD's Section three opportunity portal. All righty, Section three workers that reside near the project location may also qualify as targeted Section three workers. So for this project, that service area is defined by this map. So basically, what it usually is, is five thousand people or a one-mile radius outside of that. The city will track all hours worked on the project based on these three categories of workers. So this will require collection of certain income information. So your engineer is not required to do this, as they are not considered Section three. Grant administrators are, as well as the construction contractor, but there's no needed action on your part. My job is to keep track of all this for you, so nothing needed again from you. If you would like to delve deeper into policy, there are some policy issuance Section three V point one PDF that I can provide. You can also find this information on twenty-four CFR Part seventy-five. Ms. Rebecca Grimm, who is my right-hand woman, can also help you with any questions. She's been a powerhouse of helping move these grants along. We absolutely could not function without her help, so she's been a fantastic asset to the city of Elgin. Is that the end of mine?
That's your last one.
Escapate. All righty, that's it for me. Basically, just keeping in compliance, everyone did hear and receive the information. Do you have any questions or concern about Section three policy?
So that's anybody within that income threshold can go and apply?
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else?
Do we know how many positions that might be?
So it's going to be different depending on the contractor. Basically, what we find in Texas is that most often contractors already have a pretty significant staff on hand. So it's not very option often that they're going to use a contract worker. These regulations are in place for all fifty states, so it might be a little bit different in Wyoming or Florida or something like that. But what we do find in Texas is that for the most part, the construction contractor does have their own employees on hand, and so it's kind of rare for us to see a Section three worker.
The truth is, this isn't a major construction project, so there won't be a need for a huge amount of workers.
Anything else? I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to come and visit a community that we serve. So thank you very much. If anyone needs anything, we're always available, so please reach out.
Okay, so we didn't have anyone sign up to talk on public hearing number two, so we will move on to public comment. The first one's Grant Henny.
Thank you. I think this is the first time I've addressed you, Mayor, so welcome as mayor. Thank you for the job that you're doing, and thank you all for volunteering to do this wonderful, high-paying job, as I say every time I come up here. My concern today is the future of Elgin. We've seen a lot of change. This council and previous councils have approved many building projects in neighborhoods across the city. What I, what we're seeing now is the ramifications of that, and one example is our electrical grid system. We're behind about a year, Encore's behind a year in keeping up with the grid demands that the current growth in Elgin is demanding. And when, like in the twenty, now this current storm was, of course, caused by freezing, and the trees falling off the lines. But previous storms, when it was thirteen degrees in December, as you well know, many of us lost electricity. It's going to probably happen again this summer. This summer, we're probably going to lose electricity again, Encore was telling us, as the lines were being repaired, because we don't have enough electricity, and they're a year behind. But it is kind of your fault because you keep approving these building projects. When you're approving seventeen hundred homes and we don't have electricity, you just apply electricity to them, it hurts the rest of us. So I sat for five days with no electricity in my home. The last storm, previous storms in December of this year, we sat for about two days, went on and off every twenty-two minutes. Cut on and off. That went on for a whole day. We're really tired of the infrastructure not keeping up with the growth. We see that in roads. I mean, roads, Lord knows, we're probably ten years behind in road systems in the state of Texas. But y'all can control a lot of this by how y'all vote and how y'all do site plans and what y'all require from the builders, whether it's solar panels on commercial properties, solar panels on residential properties. That's a building code right now in the state of California. Y'all could be progressive and do things like that. But I would recommend slowing down, slowing down your projects so we can catch up, so us who have been here for many years and raised here can still enjoy Elgin. In the last situation, we lost electricity because of the ice, which many of us I see here have lost many, many trees, including myself. I was blown away by people being turned away from the rec center without paying five dollars. If you wanted to come in and sit down and warm up, or you wanted to shower, you were charged five dollars. Sickens me. You all set the policy, and you all set the fees for everything in the city. Your city manager just imposes them. And so when the police officer tells residents, you can't come here to warm up, you have to go to Maynor or Bash Drop, that is bull you-know-what. Bullshit. We should be able to go somewhere here in this town, which much tax money is that we pay as citizens on our property taxes. I know you all have seen your property taxes. We're at Austin levels now. We need to have the ability to use our facilities and help our residents and be the servant leaders that we prayed to just be. And I know you're a servant leader, and all of y'all have the opportunity to make a change for our residents. Change policy, if it's below thirty-two degrees or if it's above a hundred degrees and a resident doesn't have electricity in this town, they should be able to go to a cooling center or a warming center, and that can easily be that rec center. It doesn't have to be a declaration of emergency. Emergency is if one person is without electricity. I'm sorry, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the mayor. But I want you to please consider that.
Talking to you, you're out of order.
You're not in charge of who's out of order. Our mayor is.
It doesn't change anything. You're out of order.
So are you.
Okay, recall, you're out of order, and we need to go ahead if you don't mind.
Thank you. Please consider my suggestions.
Thank you. Okay, the next person is Hallie Rock. And please remember that we're timed to three minutes.
Oh, I'm going to be fast and sweet, as the case may be. You all have in front of you a bag with a pink ribbon. I'm the owner of Murphy's Melos, and I know many of you, and we're having a ribbon cutting tomorrow at our new mark, our new kitchen, one twenty-seven Roy Davis Road, Suite one A. We'd love to see any and all of you, three-thirty tomorrow afternoon. In front of you, we've made, we make marshmallows and smores, and in front of you are some of our Marshmallow Heart floaters. I hope you all enjoy them, and tomorrow we'll have smores, smore bar, hot chocolate, and anything else you can think of that's got way too much sugar. So if you've got any questions, our website's there, and you can message me through there. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Okay, the other ones that we have signed up have specific agenda items. Do you want to do public comment now or wait till the agenda item? Okay, Courtney?
Good evening. I'm Courtney, as you know, and I'm here today to raise awareness about an issue that's very important to me and to many of us in Elgin. We all know that our city regulations don't allow for the construction of accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, which is a huge missed opportunity for this community. These units provide an affordable and accessible solution for families with aging parents or disabled family members who want to stay close to their loved ones while retaining their independence. So providing care for elderly parents or disabled family members is a challenge for many of us, and the costs of long-term care are often astronomical. So these ADUs would offer a much-needed alternative and help families keep their loved ones close. So I'm here today to ask the council to examine what the roadblocks are to this proposal and create an action plan to address these issues. There's a record of support for the issue, and it's time to act. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, that's an action item. It's going to be later on the agenda today.
Nick, do you want to talk now or? Nick with Phil?
Hello, my name is Nick. I live here in Elgin, and I also wanted to bring up the issue that's important to all of us, the lack of access, access to accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. As someone who has aging parents, I know how hard it can be to take care of them and still have time for our own families. ADUs are a great solution for families in this situation because they allow aging parents to have their independence and still be close to their loved ones. Unfortunately, our city regulations don't allow for ADUs to be built in Elgin. That doesn't make much sense to me, especially when you consider how much our city does care about accessibility for the elderly and disabled. I'm happy to say that our council has recognized the need for ADUs and has shown support for the item in the past, like Courtney said. and has shown support for the item in the past, like Courtney said. In fact, the 2016 comprehensive plan recommended allowing ADUs with certain regulations in place. So I would like to know what the holdup is. That's kind of what I'm curious about. I'm here to ask for your help in making this change happen. Let's work together to make ADUs a reality for families in Elgin. Let's get this done. Let's give our families the options that they need to take care of their loved ones. Thank you for your time.
Kristi, do you want to speak now?
My name is Kristi, and I moved to a little piece of land off of Roma Road about three years ago. I'm here today to share my feelings about the city's response to the weather event last week and offer my thoughts, as a newcomer, on how we, together, might be able to start healing this town that I have already come to love. First, thank you to all the citizens who stepped forward to help. In my short time in the area, I have seen folks go out of their way to help their neighbors. To say it is inspiring is an understatement. Mrs. Mayor, you said in your recent address that you would like to review all actions and improve, and for that I am grateful. At work, I encourage my teams to come forward with questions, concerns, and complaints, coupled with suggestions for ways to improve and solve problems. I have attempted to take that approach this evening as well. You begin your address with a statement about complaints posted on social media. That acknowledgement set a bitter tone for the entire conversation. In the future, I am hopeful that you direct your comments towards the helpers and those who are currently suffering. Your outlining of personal hardships were disrespectful to those who do not share your level of privilege. I am hopeful that this is something that you will reflect on and leave out of future public statements. You mentioned that the city did not receive any calls from citizens requesting shelter. Besides the obvious barriers created by the lack of electricity and cell connectivity, why is it the responsibility of citizens in peril to request aid? How do you know that it is safer for people to remain at home than to travel to an emergency shelter? There is great economic disparity in Elgin, and your comment is steeped in the privilege and access that many of our neighbors do not enjoy. I would like to suggest that the leaders of this community acknowledge and attempt to improve the culture that has existed over the years. Singling out detractors as malcontents is not only offensive to those of us trying to help, but gives the impression that you have no respect for your constituents. If you would like for citizens to believe in their leaders, you have to show them that you'll be there for them when they are most in need. If there are staffing barriers to utilizing the emergency shelters as was intended, let's organize a citizen committee of volunteers to help. I personally have just a few minutes from the rec center and will happily volunteer to remain at the shelters so that others who do not have access to the amenities that I do at my home can be safe. If there are other similar problems, let the citizens who have shown time and time again that they are there for their neighbors assist you in your endeavors. I spend my days at Girl Scouts of Central Texas inspiring young people to make mistakes and learn from them. I am hopeful that this team of leaders will be inspired to do the same. Thank you.
Now we move on to our presentations. Proclamation declaring February the 2023 as National Black History Month in the city of Elgin. Whereas the month of February has been designated Black History Month by every sitting president of the United States since 1976, what began as a week's celebration and observance has been expanded to the whole month. It is a time that we recognize the invaluable role African Americans have played in every aspect of our nation's history and story. This year's theme, Black Resistance, is a testimony of how far we have come and still how far we must go. Without Black Resistance, we could not have the educational opportunities that currently exist for all students. Without Black Resistance, there would never have been a Black President of the United States. Without Black Resistance, there would not be a Black Vice President of the United States. Without Black Resistance, there would never have been a Black Mayor of our small town, Elgin, Texas. Without Black Resistance, we would not only be able to sit wherever we want to sit, but now we own the bus. Without Black Resistance, schools would still be separate and not equal. It is only through Black Resistance can we truly be the land of the free and the home of the brave. Whereas during Black History Month, NAACP Elgin Branch Number 6174, the Elgin Juneteenth Organization, Elgin Pastors, Ministers, and the City of Elgin pause to recognize, celebrate, and remember the history and contributions of African Americans, as well as the legacy of Black contributors, scholars, and icons in the city of Elgin. And whereas the city of Elgin, in honor of the sesquicentennial Reveal the Black on Con's mural, recognizes Harvey Restbrook, Annie Lee Haywood, S.H. McShan, Dorothy MacArthur, and Monty Joe Thomas, a kickoff for 2023 Black History-themed Black Resistance. And whereas Sister Gwendolyn Lee Johnson, known as Miss Gwen, church clerk of Mount Moriah Missionary Baptist Church, Reverend Stephen Ward pastor, will be honored on February the 4th at 10 o'clock the morning at the firewall located on 201 North Main Street with the Hattitude Salutes Event in recognition of her unwavering contribution to her community and years served as a citywide volunteer. And whereas on Saturday, February 25th, the MLK Scholarship Committee will present the citywide Black History Program with keynote speaker Mr. James Bryant, Elgin High School Class of 1966, reflecting on both the history and teachings of African Americans and to focus on the progress, richness, and diversity. And whereas local churches will present Black History programs throughout the month, and therefore, as we focus on the ongoing struggle Black Resistance will and shall overcome. Now, therefore, I, Theresa McShan, Mayor of Elgin, Texas, by the authority vested in me by the citizens of Elgin, do hereby proclaim February the 2023 as National African American History Month in the city of Elgin. I call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all citizens to observe this month by participating and supporting all festivities celebrating the proud heritage of African Americans. Do we have someone to accept it?
We don't have additional official folks tonight. We did in a major presentation on Saturday at Hattitude. And I'll make sure this copy gets to Gwen and the other folks recognized.
Yeah, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. We're, first item on the manager's report, can you hear this, son? Tonight is to discuss the city's response to Winter Storm Mara that happened over the last week. We have, we're going to speak from the administration standpoint, all four departments that were actually involved in this response, and talk about all that we were able to accomplish this last week. First, I think it's important to, in response to some questions we've had, to go over some of the issues so there's a broader understanding of what emergency management is, what our commitment is for emergency shelter, and how the city of Elgin meets its obligations. And I think one thing, one overarching thing that we, that we all need to keep in mind is it is not the government's role to be all things to all people, all the time, in every situation. Our goal, our objective of democratic government anywhere in America is to serve the best interests of the majority. That's a guiding principle that this council uses. We serve, do the best for the most is, it's actually a quote from Ben Franklin when we founded this country. So our system of operations is that, for all operations, but particularly emergency management, is that the staff and the mayor and the city council are constantly communicating and working together whenever we're faced with an issue like this. Due to the council's support, the city of Elgin has put together a very highly qualified, very experienced staff to manage these operations and make sure that we conform to all obligations that we make prior to these events. The mayor and council, as we're going to talk about a little bit later, certainly have ultimate authority over virtually anything the staff does. But in an emergency situation, the stat, the council and the mayor rely heavily on the staff to guide them through that process. And here in Elgin today, we have a very functional operation where the mayor and council provide good support to the staff. And in turn, the staff performs in a way that's consistent with what the council wants to see. And that's exactly what happened in this case. That doesn't mean that every individual agrees with every other decision made by other individuals. But what it means is we work together as a team, and that's why we've achieved the success we have in Elgin in recent years. And I would say, as it relates to emergency management operations in particular, if the mayor or the council are getting involved in decisions being made during an event, then that's indicative of a major operational problem you have in your city. So we function appropriately in this event. We made a very effective and appropriate response relative to the obligations that we have as a city. And the mayor and the council gave the support to us to do that. One thing I want to mention, just to make crystal clear to everybody, cost or funding are never an issue when it comes to emergency management issue. There's never a discussion when we're in an event where costs are a concern. Certainly, we, budget time, funding projects, funding services is a challenge, as we're going to talk about a little bit later. Declaring an emergency enables the city to recover sometimes FEMA funds or state funds to reimburse us for those costs. But I assure you, what something costs at the time an emergency is going on is something that never goes into our thinking or our concerns. I also want to mention that both Encore Electric and Bluebonnet Electric are obviously our primary service providers. Encore is really the major service provider in Elgin. I think there may be some, some residents that have Bluebonnet service. Out in our, in our new business park, actually, Bluebonnet is building into that system. But Encore Electric has a franchise agreement with the city. They are our electric provider. Under the law, they're not an exclusive provider. Anybody else who wants to build an electric system into our town can do that. But as you might imagine, that never occurs. Because once somebody builds their system, it's not cost-effective for someone else to come in there. So Encore, under our franchise agreement, has certain performance standards under our agreement and under state law that they have to conform to. I'm very confident that they always have conformed to those minimum standards. I'm confident Encore and Bluebonnet both did the best they could in this situation. But it's frustrating for everybody. I don't think there's, I know the mayor, myself, and my wife, there's no member at city council that did not go without power through this event at some period of time. But I also want to make clear that there's no public official, no individual public official, that can demand something and get action out of electric provider. I don't care if you're a state rep, you're the mayor, you're the county judge. They run their business, they run their business the way they do. We're a customer of theirs. The city has no direct control over management decisions they make or anything they do. I do want to talk about specifically the emergency shelter. That's, that's been discussed. I do think there's some confusion about what the emergency shelter is for and what the commitments the city has made in our agreement to build that shelter and, and to operate it under our agreement with the county, with Bastrop County and the state. It's important to understand the basic definition of an emergency shelter is to serve people who have been displaced or forced to evacuate from their homes. Or if there's a community-wide major impact event. Frankly, inclement weather, cold weather, power being out, those do not constitute people being displaced or needing to evacuate. The basic history on the building that we have as an emergency shelter is years, basically before I got here, six years ago, the city had made a deal with the county. Bastrop County had agreed to provide FEMA funds that they had obtained, a million dollars to build a very basic shelter building. At that time, the city council made the decision, which I think was the right one, to come up with $2 million of taxpayer funds to invest in this building, to make it a rec center too, to make it function as both. And it's important to understand that the $2 million we put toward that fund was generated from certificates of obligation. And so those, that debt is paid for by people who are actually property owners, property taxpayers in the city of Elgin. That's who's paying for that facility, who's paid for it so far and has paid for it to this point. Our agreement with the county was to design a facility that could be utilized at emergency shelter. And it's designed, as it's built, to, at a minimum, house up to 50 people for two weeks. And that's fully housed people, food, we have cots, every, can be completely housed. We've got washing machines down there for up to two weeks. Now, as a practical matter, we think we could probably double that number if we needed to. If, if we did have a situation where people were displaced or forced to evacuate from their homes, we could do a lot more than 50, but our minimum commitment to the county is to be able to house 50 people. That's exactly how it was built. The shelter's been activated probably a half a dozen times, I suppose, in the last four years since it opened. The last two were the Rolling Pines Fire that happened in Bastrop County. The county judge ordered the shelter open. And residents came from Bastrop, and we housed them in that facility. I think that was the only time we've had overnight people in the facility, that's right, since it's open. The Elgin tornado that came, we opened it then. And of course, the facility was really instrumental in part of the COVID vaccine release rollout. That was used a number of times. But what's important to understand, and based on some of the comments we had tonight, an emergency shelter is not a warming center. A warming center is not based in any concept of emergency management. It's, it's a very nice idea. It sounds good, but it's not within our obligation to do. And we're not, we don't have the resources to do simply a warming center. Now, what I think is important to understand is, that doesn't mean anybody else in town could open a warming center. Anybody else in town, any organization, anybody that had a facility that was motivated to do so could have opened a warming center and invited people to come in. The only thing they can't do is to advertise that as being affiliated with the city. Because when the city opens a shelter, it triggers a very specific response on our part that requires staffing. We're going to talk about virtually every service area that was utilized in our response to the storm would have been impacted. All that staff, we cross-train staff, we use staff in different ways. All of that staff would have been depleted for us to open the emergency shelter. So, so that's what's important. And if any, let's say a church said they wanted to open a shelter, well, if they, they can do that on their own. But if they declare it as being in a shelter associated with the city, then they have to follow all the same rules, all the same guidelines we do. So it's a case of, if a private interest wanted to do that, they have a lot more freedom to do whatever they want. But I'd also say, I think in this sense, in a small way throughout the community, I think that actually worked in this case. We've heard from any number of people who knew their neighbors were without a power. They opened their doors and let them come in. Relatives that welcomed other folks in to help them out. So it, it is a situation that, that people can get involved in. People want to volunteer, there's another way to do that. But the city of Elgin's procedures, obligations, resources are not for a warming center. There's no middle ground between current operations and a center where we invite people to come in. The only way to do that is if we open the emergency shelter. And I do want to say again, I think it's a very important point, it's just a fact, to say that during this event, we did not have any requests for shelter. We had no one call us. We, we took many calls and lined people up with all different lines of service. We helped people individually address things, but no requests. We had nobody, even when we asked them, "Are you displaced? Do you need shelter?" No one said they did. And there's no information that we've had to this date that any of our citizens And there's no information that we've had to this date that any of our citizens, city of Elgin citizens, were displaced or forced to evacuate their homes due to this storm, and also, there was a never request made by Bastrop County, even a request, not only not an order, for us to open our shelter. So the city mains, as far as our emergency center shelter operations go, we're fully compliant with our agreement with Bastrop County, and the state of Texas, and FEMA, regarding all the funding we received and the commitment we've made in this regard. So, in my mind, taking all these facts into account and considering all the facts and the details relative to the situation, there wasn't a decision made by the city to not open the shelter. The shelter wasn't open because conditions didn't warrant it. So, next, we're actually, we're going to have the police chief speak to the police departments.
With respect to the number of personnel hours that have been devoted to this storm, as of this afternoon, it was 209 and a half total hours, and that is a combination of overtime and just regular on-duty hours, and we are still counting with that, as we still have to do reporting and other things to the Texas Division of Emergency Management. With regard to traffic, everybody was really well behaved during the storm. We had absolutely no crashes that were directly related to the storm, only other than one vehicle that slid off the roadway due to icy conditions, but we assisted that person get their car back up on the roadway and on their way. As far as welfare checks, we did door-to-door welfare checks at 515 Old McDavid Road at the Elgin Housing Authority. It had been reported to me that there was a comment made on social media that there were elderly people, I didn't see the post myself, but it was the term that they were in need. So, we went out there with flyers in English and Spanish, and we knocked on every door, talked to folks, and delivered the flyers to the residences that did not open to us, and nobody reported being in need out there, other than they wanted their electricity back on. We fielded 16 calls through 911 to check welfare on people, and those primarily were from friends and relatives that live away from Elgin, wanting to check on their friends and family that were here. We made every single one of those calls, nobody was in need, other than they want their electricity back on. And with regard to emergency declarations of who can and establish an emergency declaration, and why does it matter? Well, the governor, the county judge, and the mayor can make a disaster declaration, and the governor's declaration is all-inclusive of the entire state. The county judge is for the county as a whole, and the mayor can do it for the local jurisdiction. And what that means is, in our case, for Mayor McShan, if you want, in the need of, if there's evacuations, if there's other emergencies, you can establish mandatory evacuations and curfews, prevent cost gouging, institute measures to prevent looting, and suspend the 72-hour public meeting notice of the Open Meetings Act as well. And that is in order to enact emergency operations and expenses towards that. Not familiar how to use this to make the next slide go. Okay. All right, with regard to what is the role of the Bastrop County Office of Emergency Management? It coordinates all emergency management actions with the Texas Division of Emergency Management and ultimately FEMA, if it gets that far. They respond to emergency preparedness for natural, man-made disasters such as wildfires, provide media services, and one good example of one of the things they help with is to forward people or push people towards the Warren Central Texas in order to get reverse notifications, in which we did do that on two occasions during this event, and that was for the boil water notice for the Elgin Oaks subdivision. That was a very targeted and very precise notice delivery to the affected people based upon their GPS and GIS coordinates for their residences. And the other was for when the power went out and 290 was affected and all of the traffic signals went out, and it was out for about three hours. And we staffed up, had people on overtime to work the intersections. Fortunately, everything went very, very well. And one of the bright lines, you know, for FEMA to get involved is, in this disaster, we have to reach the $51.5 million threshold in damages for this particular storm. And for the county threshold, for the Texas Division of Emergency Management and the State Operations Center, and for that money from the state to start rolling, we have to reach $432,000 in damages. And we have received resources from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, and those are chainsaw crews that are in town, and Public Works Director Michael Gonzalez, we'll talk more about that. But what it does pay for as well, or what they do provide, and that is just a matter of picking up the phone and asking as chainsaw crews, fuel, water, personal protective equipment, and much, much more. Also part of the Office of Emergency Management is the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team, and that is the community organizations active in disasters or co-ed. They organize volunteers for a whole variety of different things, and for our case, our thing is emergency preparedness, mitigation, and response and recovery. One of the examples of that is anybody that would have been displaced, that was medically fragile. The long-term recovery had a block of hotel rooms ready to go for those people to be placed into. Those who were not medically fragile, but targeted was for homeless folks, was Pastor Novus Ministry down on Highway 95 in Bastrop. And if we were to have run across anybody that wanted to go there, we would have taken them there. We had no requests. Then the State Operations Center is rolling out the State of Texas Emergency Assistance Registry, and that's coming to Bastrop County. It is up and running on the state's website, but as Bastrop County gets their rules and regulations with it firmed up, then it will be rolled out to Bastrop County, and that is where anybody that is medically fragile, has other needs, disabilities, transportation impediments, whatever the case may be, they can register on that website, and then in the event of an emergency or something of this nature, we check on them. We know where they are, we call them, and if everything's fine, if we don't reach them, then we go to your house and check on you. And that is coming. And that is all I have.
Hopefully, I'll have some time at the end to answer a few questions, but first off, I'd just like to say how outstanding and how proud I am of the Public Works Department. Not me, but the men and women that are on the ground actually doing the work. I don't think you would believe, I don't think the normal resident would believe, just all what we have done, what we have picked up and what we have to go, because I don't really believe it, and I ordered them out there to go pick them up. Just really outstanding group of guys, and we worked as late as we could, safely as possible, each of the evenings that we were out there. After getting all the resources lined up, went out there to be with them, and just the stories that I wish I could tell all of you all at once is, you know, the guys are pulling brush in the right of way into the loaders, gloves frozen, right, ice on their hands, chainsaw dust all in their jacket, and ice going down their back, and they're there, they're doing the work, they're doing an excellent job. At the end of the evening, I say, "All right, we need you back out here to do it again", and they're back the next day. Even it got to the point where we said, "All right, this is going to be difficult, we need some volunteers for Saturday." And we met our number of volunteers to run a crew on Saturday, so they ran again that time. We're out there, I just want to talk a little bit about our operations so far. Picking up just over 1,000 cubic yards of debris and brush. What that looks like is, we get to a site and we chop it up and we put that in the loader, eight yards goes into a dump truck, and we smash that down and it goes back to the public works yards. And we're running trucks like this going that way. So if eight yards fits in one truck, we count up our loads till we get to just over 1,000 where we are right now. We're able to get a chipper that we're on loan with and chip some of that material, but by no means do we think that's an acceptable solution for all of the brush that we have going on around town. So, right now, we're setting up resources to take in more of that, but right now, it's just in the management stages of just what we can manage. So brush comes in, we process it, we manage it, and then we try to stick it in some other In times like these, while it is really, really difficult for us, I'm not going to go back because I'll mess up the slides, it really focuses our hierarchy of needs, right? And so, we would like to, and we do have made a commitment to residential pickup, we cannot answer that question now until we get our hierarchy of needs taken care of. There's limbs down in the street, if there's hazards for our emergency services, that absolutely takes priority. And after that, we're going to move on to the parks. Advise you not to go into the parks right now, as we're still working on those kind of things, but you can see with your eyes that we've got hanging limbs and leaning limbs, and so we'll make that our priority next. Absolutely would and have made that commitment to do that residential pickup, but not until those hierarchy of needs are taken care of first. And so when someone calls our department and asks that question, while it's difficult for us to say, at the same times, it's easier for us to look at our hierarchy of needs and say, "Well, not right now, because we're still addressing roadways that aren't open, or now we're working on, the last couple of days, we've been working on alleyways, make sure that our services can get through there, and we'll continue to do that until those are knocked out, and we'll move to the parks and then so on." Residential brush pickup is not a service that we have historically provided here in Elgin. Okay, so the resources don't exist right now in the Public Works Department. You may have done bulk item pickup with your regularly scheduled waste management service, and we've done a few of those, but residential bulk pickup for vegetated debris has not been a service. So while this council approved some expenditures for a few of those items, we're working as quickly as we can to get those capital expenses in our inventory, and then we can work to process much of the debris that's on the roadway that you see right now. It's going to take some time, it's going to take some time to address that. When we start to address that, even with the partnership of our contractors, even with the Public Works crew going out there, it's going to take some time to get to your house. And while it's a difficult question for us to answer, at the same time, it's relatively easy. When we're done with this one, we're going to go to the park, and we're just going to keep going down the street until it gets knocked out. We have the map back at the shop, we have GIS we can use, and we just, as simple as we can, that street's done, we're going to move on to the next one. Focusing on the highest priority of needs first and then working towards those other ones. At any time, and I know a lot of folks in Elgin aren't in a position to do this, I've already seen a few homes around town that are in a position to do this, at any time, should you get tired of looking at that brush and have the means to have a tree service come and haul it off, you can start that at any time. They have designated sites where they're going to take that, most of the time, it's down in Hornsby Bend, they recycle the mulch and different things, but we're understanding that not everybody in Elgin has that opportunity, and so we will, we have made the commitment to get to you. We figure this is the best process right now, is to sit, let it stage, of course, we don't have a good area to put it. As we get to your home, we'll address those needs as we get there. Not going to take the slide backwards because I don't know how to work it. We'll let Amy do that one.
Yes, Texas A&amp;M Forest Service is out there in the parks, so that's a star request. Chief sent the star request up, and they came back down. The reason why they're working in the parks is because they are not going to work on our equipment, and so we'll continue to use Public Works with our loaders and dump trucks and things. The best way that they could provide help was with their chainsaws, their equipment, and so they just started out in the parks. They can fall trees, and there have been falling trees, stacking them up in piles, and then at some point, we'll come back with our machines to pick up those piles. Just a quick comment on sheltering. We have deployed the shelter, I've been down there as Parks and Rec Director. It's kind of interesting, the guy who, the group from Red Cross that trained us, he actually came from the prison system, and he says, "What makes me really effective at running shelters or training other people to run shelters is that it's very similar to a prison." You're in there with the people too. So the first time, or the time that we had an overnight instance, where we stayed down there with those people. Just to let you know, most, the majority of the people, they don't want to be there any more than you do, and so when we had the opportunity to move them into secondary housing options, or if they had gotten in contact with their family members, they did that as quick as they could. And when we have a level that's not quite up to where we can trigger a mass event where we have those 50 people, oftentimes, and we talk about this with OEM, with the chief, with everybody, oftentimes, it's best to just push them towards hotel options, and there's vouchers for that sometimes, there's different opportunities where they can get involved. The city's part to staff and manage that, we could be ready, we are ready, to do that at the time that it calls, but always in that process, the folks that are in there, and I've sat next to them and I've shared meals with them, they're like, "I don't really want to be here." As soon as I have another option to get out, we can do that, and the city always works to make those happen too. That's my experience from sheltering.
Hello, everybody. I'm Amy Miller, your Community Services Director for the city of Elgin. So we're going to talk about communications during the winter storm, Mara. We provided information on the city's website. We have a News Emergency Updates tab that was actually created after the February 21 storm in response to citizen requests to make this type of information easier to find on the website. But that same information that was on the website was also posted on multiple social media platforms. We do use Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We have something called a News Flash, which is also on our website, but that's a subscription item, so people can sign up to get news flashes. We use those throughout the year to share all kinds of information about things the city's doing, events they're holding, press releases, but during a storm event, the News Flash, or any emergency event, that's another way for us to put the information out. If you've signed up for those, they come to your email. But in placing it on the website, that means it's in two places on the website. So it appears at the bottom of the website, and you can scroll through the articles, or you can go to that News Emergency Updates tab and be able to scroll through the content there. We had Mayor McShan provided a video message. We did use another piece of our website, which is called a Civic Alert, which is another thing that people sign up for. The chief mentioned the reverse 911 for the boil water notice and the traffic signals. And ultimately, starting on Friday, we have provided all of the information. Am I still doing all right? Okay, all right. We provided all of the information in a bilingual manner, so, in print. So the information, starting on Friday, was put on the website in bilingual, and then we also did hard copies. On Friday, those hard copies became available at the Elgin Rec Center, and then on Saturday at the library. There was direct communication with individual citizens, our chief talked about that. The recreation center was opened on Thursday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It was free to come in, have the charging stations, to use the Wi-Fi, to, you know, be in the overall lobby area, and we called it a free coffee program. It was a pretty significant expansion of our Monday through Friday Wildcat Walker Senior Coffee Program that we offer. We continued that on Friday, Saturday, and then on Sunday from noon to 6:00. And then our library on Saturday was open for free, all free Wi-Fi, computer lab, and they had a really great mental health program that was, it's an ongoing project funded through St. David's. I'm going to look at this next slide, and then, oh, okay, well, I'm going to give, if you can scroll me back. Well, I'm gonna give, if you can scroll me back, I wanted to give some additional details. So while social media is not the only way to reach the community by any means, it is, in our case, in Elgin, we have a lot of engagement and participation in it. So our Facebook page has 16,945 followers, 7,000 followers, but we had a reach last week of almost 17,000. So our reach was 16,945. That was a 200% increase of our reach in any typical week prior. The Instagram account has 1,471 users, and the reach for Instagram was 828, which was a 65% increase in its typical reach. When we were operating the rec center, we would have, on a typical Thursday, 399 people at the rec center. On the Thursday of last week, we had, if I can look at this and the microphone at the same time, we had, Elizabeth may have to help me with this. In the winter storm, Mara, oh, we had 399 people on Thursday, February 2nd. Of those, most of them were regular patrons using the facility. We had about 14 people who indicated they were specifically there. They came in for the free lobby, the charging, the wifi, and the coffee and so on. And we had about a dozen people each day that were not regular patrons. The, so the use was down due to the weather in terms of regular patrons, but we definitely still had significant participation for that. On Saturday, the library had 87 visitors. And 24 of those were wifi users, separate from 11 folks using our computer system. And we do look at that differently. If you come in with your own devices and are using the wifi in the library, we track that separate from if you come in to use the computers that we provide. We did make a point of emphasizing that the computer resources were free and available to anyone in the community. There is a library card if you're gonna check out books. And if you live outside the city limits, there's a $15 fee for that card. But you're not required to have a library card to either bring your own device and use the free wifi or to use the computer system. And we did invite folks to come take advantage of that, any paperwork they needed to do, fill out the T-DOM survey, et cetera. And that continues to be available. And the rec center went back to regular operations on Monday.
So I just wanna follow up on a couple of things I forgot to mention earlier. Talking about the shelter, just to be clear for the record. As I described, we actually have a very unique situation in Elgin in that the city owns that building. We own it, we operate it, we make all the decisions about it, except in cases, as I said earlier, when we're directed to open the shelter by the judge or the governor. So, but for our own purposes, virtually any of us, the council can decide to open the shelter. The mayor can direct the shelter to be open, the council as a whole can direct the shelter to be open. The city manager can decide to open the shelter. So it's actually, I just wanna make sure, we're not bound, we have obligations that we have to meet, but we're not bound by that system. We can use that for a shelter anytime we want to, anytime we feel it's necessary. As we talked about, well, and the other, that's the other part again, I just wanna make sure. Some of the comments we did hear was the impression that the emergency shelter is just a building where we can just go down and open the door and everybody come in. Clearly, it's not that. Have a whole different part of the operation that gets triggered. That makes it very challenging for us to do that. So it's not something that we can do in an unlikely way. I wanna say too, that when you're involved in any type of emergency like this, emergency preparedness is the key. But also, you have to respond to the situation at hand. There's nobody that can predict exactly what's gonna happen with the weather, exactly what time it's gonna happen, what we're gonna need to do. So the fact that the city may have not known, we didn't know exactly what our response on Wednesday, we didn't know what we were gonna do on Friday, certainly not a failure on our part. It just shows we were continuing to evolve with the situation and make services and facilities available to people as we went. I did wanna clarify one thing, again, we've talked about before. The declaration of a disaster area has no immediate effect on operations. It doesn't change anything we're doing or any part of our response. It's simply a mechanism to position us to get reimbursed by federal state dollars down the road. A couple of things I just wanna make clear that were misrepresented earlier tonight. The fee that every citizen, since the opening of our rec center, every citizen that uses it pays a fee. To use that facility, you have to have a membership. That was a decision made by the city council at the time of the opening of the rec center. While it's not an exorbitant fee, it is a way that we manage the facility for who's coming and going. So I don't wanna think that if we were asking people to pay a fee in order to use, partially use the facilities that all others were paying for, was unfair. It was a situation where we had to manage the facility and manage it in a way, as I said earlier, that was consistent with everybody in town. So, and I also wanna say that the claim made earlier tonight that a police officer was down at the rec center telling people they couldn't stay is false. Completely false, completely false. That didn't happen. And it's disappointing that someone would represent that when it didn't happen. So, moving forward, we continue to evolve with the situation. We continue to respond to issues. And as Michael said, part of this issue is, we need flexibility. We're entering into an area where, a service area which we haven't provided before and we haven't done in the past. So, as was said earlier, the first thing we're gonna do is focus on city facilities. The staff now is working on where we've cleared roadways. Anything we've cut, we're out there picking that up. We're gonna focus on parks and city facilities. We're guessing that that can take about a month just for us to catch up on our stuff when you allow for weather conditions and other challenges we might have. The other thing that's important to understand is, this last week, it was all hands on deck for the entire staff. Everybody in the public works department was focused on this effort. Soon, they'd need to go back to their regular jobs they were doing. So we won't have that same level of personnel, that same level of impact on this particular service area, but we'll do our best. As Michael said, we're committed to picking up all debris in town. Any debris that folks have put out on the street. You know, frankly, I was, I've been very encouraged by, we've seen the response from the vast majority of our citizens in town. When I was out over the weekend, I spoke to many citizens. And everybody I spoke to did not have negative comments about the city, understood and appreciated the response we're making. And in my own experience, as Michael said, I think for y'all, for the council, it's just as simple as if folks are willing to wait. And in some cases, that means maybe two months. You might be waiting longer than that by the time we get around to picking up in front of your house. If you wanna wait, we're committed to coming around and picking that up. If however you don't wait that long, then there's private service you can hire to do that. In my own personal experience, it was probably about 50/50. Some of the citizens said they didn't wanna wait, and others said they didn't mind wait. So we're definitely committed to doing that. One thing that we thought, we'd get a little help, we were hoping we'd get a little help from TechStop, but that's not gonna happen. TechStop, their rules and procedures, they're, in our case, focused just on 290 and 95. Main Street downtown will be for us to collect all that debris. So if you've been down Main Street, you know, there's plenty just on Main Street that we're gonna have to take a particular effort. Some of those things, there's at least one really big tree I know of that fell on Main Street that's gonna be a challenge for us. As Michael said, we do have, if you recall at our last meeting, council authorized, in a timely way, a purchase of a new wood chipper. We've got that on order. We hope that'll be delivered in a couple of weeks, and that will really help our efforts that way. We haven't talked about tonight, but I think council knows we've taken steps to waive permit fees for reconnections, people that have lost power at their house and need to reconnect the power, the power meter. That is their responsibility, but we've made the decision to waive those permit fees. And also typically, when you connect power, there's an inspection required by the city before the electric provider can reconnect you. So we waived that inspection as well to help expedite that process. I think we've had almost 25 people take out permits so far. And some of those have been reconnected, and so folks are working on that as well. We do have additional resources, that other items that we're talking about in ways that'll be responsive to the event and the needs folks have now. But we're not really, we don't wanna talk about those till we're sure, we're sure that will happen. And then finally, we'll continue to provide information on a regular basis. As Amy said, I think we have a really robust effort to provide information. And we'll continue to employ that approach, spread information as we have it. But the good thing about Elgin, I think, and our operation, is we're still small enough. We're able to give individual attention to anybody that has an individual request or situation. As Michael said, I think part of the challenge for us moving forward with brush is we need people to be patient. We're committed to this effort, but it's really having no experience with it. I don't know anybody that has had an experience with an event like this. How long exactly it's gonna take us to get around, frankly, just remains to be seen. But we want folks to know that we're committed to doing that, and we'll get there eventually, so. So with that, I'd be glad to try to expand on anything we talked about or answer any questions anybody might have.
Quick question. Has there been any workplace injuries due to all this hard work these guys are doing?
Has there been any injuries?
Yes, but you had to report.
Michael got his feelings hurt, but outside of that.
Thankfully, there's been no serious injuries. We are aware of what could happen. That's why we needed to cut some of our working times at night down. Charles is a great guy, he's got a scrape on the nose. Luckily, as it looks right now, that's a turbo surgery. The guys did a great job, and I could not do it without orchestrating a band, watching out for each other, over brush to the side, watching out for the loader, packing up. They've done a great job that part, something that I haven't seen.
I will say though, it will be an issue with the chipper, as I said. This is a new piece of equipment for us. And anybody that's seen that movie Fargo knows, wood chipper, some things can happen. So even that part, we don't wanna get in a rush when we get the equipment. We're gonna have to make sure people are properly trained. But we're always conscious of workplace injuries.
We're pretty close to where the Texas Chainsaw Massacre took place.
Well, keep that in mind too.
One more quick question. Chief, did you see any uptick or any burglary increases due to the power outage?
We had numerous alarms, but nothing out of the ordinary. They were all quite related.
So is there gonna be a charge or a demerit or whatever for those alarms that went off during the?
You get, sir, do you get so many very responses before you charge?
I understand that, but I'm wondering if those are gonna get.
Short answer is no. We're not gonna charge anybody, we'll make sure that doesn't happen.
I was out at midnight the other night with a couple of you guys, you know, in the church. And it went off again at 3:30 in the morning, so.
I think if I could make a few comments, you know, in regards to the recreation center and emergency shelter. I mean, I think, you know, I think most of us probably vernacular, we don't know what an emergency shelter is in terms of what the Office of Emergency Management says. And I think that's okay, but I think what I'm hearing time and time again, and I think as we continue to have these crazy events, which are gonna continue, we all know they're gonna continue. I think we need to maybe reevaluate what sort of facilities or what sort of services we are providing. And if we can't call it an emergency shelter because that has a certain definition, could we call it a resilience hub? You don't wanna call it a warming center, that's fine. But I think that the idea is that, again, we're gonna continue to see these kind of events happen. And I think if we have a facility that has showers, that potentially it has, and I realized during Snowmageddon 2021, there was no water, and that was problematic and that sort of thing. But assuming if A, B, and C check out, using those facilities and planning, opening it up to the public to say, yeah, we're not gonna charge $5 to come in and use the shower. Or if you need to bring in you and your four kids here to warm up because you haven't had, you know, heat. Or, you know, it's July and your AC's gone out because the grid failed and, you know, grandma's, you know, getting very hot, having a place to bring her in. I mean, I think that's something we as a city need to be talking about. And I, you know, I realize this is not, you know, emergencies are not everything you can plan for. But I think in the opening statements, I do think it's a time for us to say, you know, what did we learn from this experience? What could we potentially do differently and serve differently? And so I think, you know, with that, with the mat, and that in mind, thinking about the rec center and about how do we utilize that facility? Because we are gonna continue to have wacky climatic events, whether it's hot, whether it's cold. And you have different scenarios, and you train staff on that, and you pull out the scenario that fits for that particular event as best you can, right? You can't always prevent or you can't always plan for everything. But I think that is, you know, what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I would just say that we're, I would just say that I agree with you that there seems to be confusion on a number of people's part about what an emergency shelter is. And although this has been our operation plan since it opened, that's why we tried to go through more details about that this evening, to share that information. But I'd also say, there's no event, no project that we ever do that debriefing at the end is not valuable. And we talk about ways we can do things better. So we're certainly open to doing that if the council directs that to happen.
Tom, excuse me, what is the city's process for debriefing for autopsy in a situation like this?
Well, typically, again, it's a staff operation, so staff gets together and we talk about issues and strengths and weaknesses, what things went right, what things went wrong. And we're always evolving those things. But truthfully, the issues that were just mentioned, you know, we've never had the council get involved in that type of discussion. So again, from the staff perspective, we're complying with the rules, the process that council has adopted before. But this issue of creating some kind of flex space, if you will, between nothing and an emergency shelter is, you know, just frankly, we haven't had that discussion with the council before.
I think the council would be open to that. But first, I think, you know, from the comments I've heard today, you know, it doesn't surprise me that there's a lack of understanding from the general public regarding certain city works. I know that when we talked over the week, one of the first things that was said was, we need to take care of our priorities first. Obviously, the health and safety situations across the city were priority. city were priority. But also looking at, at what is in the future with our growth, we're not gonna stop growing. I mean, we can try and stop, it doesn't matter how many, how many permits you deny or whatever, we're not gonna stop growing. We do need to be thinking about those sorts of things in the future to see if there is a medium there that can be, can be addressed. But I'd also go back to a previous discussion that you and I had, totally different topic. There's still a line between management, you and your people, the city employees, and the council.
Okay.
And from what I've seen over the week, I thought it was managed well. I've talked to many citizens, neighbors, people that lost power, our loss of power, did not receive one complaint. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Appreciate that. And just to cover back, I'll just say, I know you know this as well as anybody, a city can provide any service we want. We can have any kind of shelter we want. There's shelters in Austin that are open 24/7 that you can go in and get food and every day. They call those homeless shelters in Austin, but, but if the city wants to invest the resources and give the staff the direction to do that, we're open to having any level of service that the council thinks is appropriate out here, as long as, but we have to have that discussion at a meaningful time, not, not when the iron's hot, kind of thing. But I'd just like to say, in closing, that I'm really proud of my team, proud of the staff, proud of what we did to serve 12,000, 15,000 people here and through this event. It certainly was not a major weather event. We've all seen what major weather events are. But still, we did a great response. I can only echo Michael's comments that our public works team doesn't get the attention that they deserve sometimes, but, but it's not always been my experience that you call on that team and there are no complaints, no resistance. It wasn't just because they were told to do it. All of those guys were trying to do right by the city, and that's why they were out there. Chief and the PD came through with the same response that we've come to expect from them at a high level. And of course, Amy is great on the communication stuff, done an outstanding job. And we make her talk to anybody that's mad, mad as, so. So I'm really proud of my team. We, we, we may not have served the individual needs of every single citizen that lives in the city or apparently lives outside the city, but I'm satisfied. We did right by, by the majority of our citizens, and that's the feedback we're getting from the majority of our citizens. Thank you, Mayor. I don't think we have necessarily a specific report on this. If you recall, when the council recently made an adjustment to our boards and commissions ordinance, one of the things the council had requested was quarterly reports from each board or commission. And planning and zoning wins the prize, I guess, for being the first to submit. So it's on the agenda, basically, to acknowledge that you've received it. But if there are any particular questions, David's here to answer those. None, I'll just keep going. Also, we have our quarterly investment report. Again, this is a report that, that we're required under the law to provide to council each quarter. You've seen this report before. Our finance director, Belinda, is here if there's, if anybody had any questions. I'll just keep going if we're good. Belinda, did you need to say anything? Do you need to say anything, or are you just here to answer questions?
No, council, any questions?
Well, if there aren't, we'll just keep going. There. I do have a, we're gonna have a couple of items I wanted to mention. One in particular that is not an agenda item, but I wanted to update council on because it's a timely issue that I had written you about earlier, and that is that apparently the, our local ESD is contemplating this evening, in fact, again, asking voters to approve a sales tax that would apply to all areas around the city limits, and that all sales tax in the future in that area would go to, to the ESD, and would be, which would be extremely detrimental to the city and the city EDC. As we've talked about before, state sales tax is of the eight and a quarter percent. We all pay at Walmart or whatever for sales tax. Off the top, the city of, the state of Texas takes six and a quarter percent of that. Bastrop County takes a half percent. So out of that eight and a quarter, the city only receives one and a half percent. And a half of that goes to the city EDC to fund their operations. So sales tax is particularly important to the city, but, but very important to the EDC. It's basically what we're talking about here is a situation that's known as first-in-time issues. And I just use this analogy about how, I think some of you are familiar with how ETJ works and how they overlap. And because, in this case, going west on 290, because Elgin established its ETJ, we're now common with the Maynor city limits. But were we not, if our ETJ weren't there, the red line shows where Maynor's ETJ would be. So this is a similar issue. If the voters approve this, this item that the EDC is attempting to do, then they would capture all of the areas that aren't currently within the city limits of Elgin. So what that means is basically here, this is frankly, the map probably needs to be updated a little bit, but it gives you a general idea where our city limits are. This is actually a presentation I made two years ago when, when they tried this before. But if they're successful in this effort, well, first, I just want to point out, as you look at our city limits, obviously, you realize that our best opportunity for commercial retail development, everybody wants more stores, more restaurants, sit-down restaurants, that those are all generate sales tax that are crucial to a city's growth and development like ours. Property taxes are intended to be set at a level to just fund basic services. Any city in Texas that has, that appears to have a lot more revenue, appears to have a lot more services, facilities, almost is always tied to the fact that they have a robust sales tax collection. But when, as we look at the city and where our opportunities are to grow for, for retail development, it's obviously would follow these highway corridors, and as shown here, most of them would be, are outside the city limits as we talk. This is just a blow up of the ESD map from previously, but the, the district covers this whole northwest corner of Bastrop County. So in effect, what it means is this pink area here shows, if they're successful in this effort, if the voters approve it, then all of that area would be a first-in-time acquisition by the ESD, and would essentially completely undermine the city's ability to grow and expand its retail centers and also to collect sales tax. And you've got to remember, I think this law is outdated in the sense that it was established at a time where cities could do involuntary annexation, where we could force people to annex into the city limits. But we can't do that anymore, so we're just kind of at the mercy of this situation. So and again, when you think about where we think our growth and development corridors are gonna happen, this move by the ESD would basically capture all that area for them, a substantial amount potentially of money, and would close out the city and the EDC from future funding. So as we said, when we think about services, facilities, improvements that we want to make as the town grows, and, and we don't want to do that by continuing to increase property taxes. Sales tax revenue is an absolute key to that, to that effort. All of our strategic planning will be, clearly be adversely affected. It would take a completely different direction for that. I don't know, I assume the ESD must presume that we'll continue to do all the same economic development things that we are doing. But obviously, if this occurs, there'd be no motivation for the city to do that. We won't be able to do partnerships with businesses that are coming, 380 agreements where we share our sales tax in the future, it would be completely undermined. And so not only would we not have the same position to offer incentives, I, I don't know if the city would be motivated to continue to offer incentives that way. And it would certainly, in many ways, put a cap on the EDC. I'm not sure how they would grow in the future without this future sales tax. So, and we're not sure, but, but this could also affect Cap Metro and the future of commuter rail coming to Elgin. So, so again, this is an issue that just came to us very recently. We, once again, as was done before, the ESD decided to move forward with this effort without any effort to communicate with the city. Fortunately, we did have one board member reach out to us, so we're aware that they at least had it on their agenda this evening. Ironically, that meeting was timed at the same time ours is. So that, I hope it's possible we had EDC board members attend. I think Owen was gonna attend, so. But it's, it's, it, it's a very important situation for the city that can really have long-term ramifications for us. It's disappointing, we're not, we're not seeing more of a partnership effort to see if there's a common middle ground on this. But again, no, no action tonight for council. Just wanted to, I realized that when we went through this before, we've changed a number of council members, so, so now this is a little bit last minute, but just wanted to make sure you had the basics and make sure there aren't any questions.
Can you remind me, Tom, what the emergency services would do with that money? By gold strutted fire trucks or?
Well, I think that's a really good question, Joy. It's, it's, I mean, again, if you look at the map, if you have even a remotely optimistic view about Elgin's growth that way, I mean, you're talking about millions of dollars a year that would go exclusively to their coffees. And, you know, typically, in my experience in the past, I think you know, I've been in some high-growth areas, and, and look, it's, it's in the city's interest that the fire department, the ESD grow with us. So finding a way to share money, when I've been in the past where we knew a big project was coming in, that project actually has bought a fire truck for the, to help them respond. So there's a way to do that in a way that, that we can kind of grow together. But this all goes to one side. And as we've talked about, I, I want people to think about all the services the city of Elgin provides. And while the fire department provides a very important service, they only provide basically one service to us. And clearly, finding some way to share that money is, is important. But, but I really think, at least the information we got, there is no thought about, we need this, or we're gonna do this. It's simply a grab to get out there now while you can and capture all this area. So I guess I'm just saying, I, I think, you know, when we did this before, if you recall, the city council, the, the mayor and city council, the EDC board, the chamber commerce board of record, all took a public position in opposition to this effort. So if we have, anybody has an opportunity to discuss it with ESD board members, we need to have those conversations to, maybe to find out what is their plan, what's the need for that money. So. I guess that's all on us. I hadn't had any other questions. Amy, did you have anything in particular you were gonna brief on tonight, or is that not? Okay.
I, I just don't plan that the election was pushed back to November.
Okay, good. Well, did they, well, we still push back to November.
There's no election.
Did they still? Well, we'll have, we'll have to see.
Yeah, obviously, like I said, I, I, I think Owen was planning on going over there, so wasn't, so he'll have a report for us tomorrow. We'll share that with everybody.
But again, I would just say, this is the second time this has come up without any interaction with the city. I think it's important if council members interact with folks to, to talk, make sure people know what's at stake here and, and see if we can have some meaningful conversation. Thank you. Amy, we're not talking about art tonight.
Art.
Okay.
We are very excited to let you all know that the city of Elgin is primed to receive its first piece of public art for its park system via a donation from Trace and Sherry Rivers. The sculpture is called Gig Aff, and it looks like a charming giraffe. It's by Jeffrey Brewer, an artist based in Nacogdoches. And we will give you more final updates at your next meeting, but Trace and Sherry wanted you all to know officially that it's coming. And our, we have to, we've got to balance tree removal and all those things too. But it'll be placed at Morris Memorial Park, near the pond and the sidewalk. So as you walk into Morris Park, from the parking lot, you will see this beautiful yellow charming gig af. And it's a really wonderful gift. The Parks Advisory Board worked on reviewing it and looking at how public, they've been looking at how public art works in the park system for over a year now. Ultimately, they are coming up with an official policy to help everyone, you know, be able to figure out how to do public art in our park system. But this is a really great start, and we're really excited about it.
Thanks, Amy. That's all I had, Mayor, unless anybody had any other questions for me.
Oh, that was, that was kind of. All right. So the next thing that we have is a consent agenda, and we have the minutes. We have a resolution for the city manager to approve professional services with FGM Architect for our police department. And then we have a resolution, the city of Elgin authorizing city manager to approve design plans related to the Bristol Hill Water Tanks and Scotta Project that we discussed already. Anybody want to pull anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Now, I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you. Have a second?
I would love a second.
Okay. We have moved in second. We'll begin with Fraser.
Fraser, yes.
Fashan, yes.
Hasnovsky, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Kalahay, yes.
LaRigas, yes.
Ennis, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Motion carries. A new business, resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract between the City of Elgin and St. David's Foundation for a grant to support the expansion of the Veterans Memorial Park.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got some real exciting news to share with you this evening regarding both our very successful and continued relationship, partnership with the St. David's Foundation and the expansion, our memorial park expansion project. So with that, I'm going to let Amy do the intros.
So first, I want you to get to meet Abina Asante. She is our St. David's Foundation Grant Manager Representative Partner. And the relationship that we've developed with St. David's over the years is without question dedicated to Elizabeth Marzak's work as our Parks and Rec Program Manager in developing that relationship with St. David's. We have been able to participate in many programs, and Elizabeth and Abina have an amazing working relationship. And I've been really glad to develop a relationship with Abina over the last, I'd say probably a year and a half to two years. So, on our part, we were invited last year to apply for a grant with St. David's for the Veterans Memorial Park expansion. That grant application was written by Elizabeth and myself, and we definitely worked really hard on it. When you get an invitation from a foundation to apply, that's a huge privilege. And we wanted to make sure that we produced a really solid plan for them to be able to agree to participate in and help us make the park expansion more successful and possible sooner. So that was submitted last fall, and they let us know here in January that they are funding the park for a $300,000 grant for Block A, which is the 200 block of Depot Street. So that funding, along with the ARPA funds that you all approved, the existing 2021A bond funds that you've allocated to the park, and additional private fundraising is going to allow us to really be able to do the whole block of the 200 block of Depot Street in 2023. So, we've got a beautiful new map. This is the result of when you get to 30% plans with a design team. So Studio 1619 shared this with us about 10 days ago. This now is really starting to be, this is what you're going to see as we develop Block A and B in particular. So, in Block A, you know, we've got the Compan play equipment at South Avenue C and Depot Street that you approved last fall, and that is under, it's already been ordered and is in production. That goes with a water play creek area, a zip line, multiple other pieces of play equipment to go with the Amazing Train, and then, of course, the stage, an outdoor classroom area, and general seating. There's two sets of fencing involved in the park overall. There's fencing along the railroad right-of-way, and then in this block, we have fencing around the playground perimeter so that the kids are not tempted to just run in their glee and fun right into Avenue C or other, you know, traffic areas. You'll be able to enter and exit the playground area there where it says 17 on the map, and that'll let you get straight around to the restrooms, which are number 19. Those are your existing restrooms through the partnership with Karts. And then you'll be able to enter at number 14, and there's another 14 kind of on that curved sidewalk. So there'll be three, at least three points, those three main points will you be able to come and go from the play area and easily access the public restrooms. We are showing, this is, there is existing sidewalk, but there's also new sidewalk with that curved walk through the middle of the park. This map is also doing a really good job of helping convey how Avenue B is going to be incorporated into the park expansion. So last year, at the end of the year, council approved closing Avenue B to vehicular traffic. So what you see now, to the left there, there's number 20. So there will continue to be sidewalk for pedestrians to, you know, come and go. But, again, no vehicles. And that asphalt of the street, that'll be removed and absorbed into the area that's marked with a number seven, and then ultimately, part of it will become the skate park, which is below 20, and become part of this kind of plaza arrival space at our pavilion, which is number 21. There is, we are going to be using that Avenue B right-of-way. In addition to the sidewalk, we're also going to be directing some stormwater drainage to a rain garden detention catchment system in front of the pavilion in Block B, and that will mirror the existing rainwater catchment garden that Karts put in, in terms of managing stormwater and keeping it contained and dispersed in an appropriate manner. So, we wanted to give Abina a chance tonight to meet you all and talk to you. I do want to mention, one of our other major projects that's in progress right now that St. David's is funding is our Libraries for Mental Health Program. And so we're doing all sorts of engaging things to help people with their just individual mental wellness. Some of that is new books for the library, but a lot of it is programming, and a lot of it is really geared towards helping people make connections with each other, connections with their families, making, connecting with new resources to help their families. We're ultimately going to have a social worker placed in the library, very much part-time in partnership with other libraries, but just tremendous resources that are coming to us with that grant. And we'll give you a formal report and update on that at a future meeting. But our first big project with St. David's was the expansion of Elgin Memorial Park. And when we did the new play system there, and the sidewalks that the city put in, and we paved the road, that shade-covered playground area was also, that was our first major thing with St. David's, and they fully funded that playground expansion piece. So, I would love, and Abina's been gracious and patient with us as we made our way through our agenda, so would love to let her chat with you.
Good evening, city council members, mayor, good evening everyone else. My name is Abina Asante, and I work with St. David's Foundation. And I'm really, really excited about this partnership with the City of Elgin to expand the Veterans Memorial Park. The foundation, through a unique relationship with St. David's Healthcare, were able to reinvest proceeds of about $80 million in Central Texas. And the past five years, we've invested about $7 million in Barstrop County alone, in the City of Elgin, about $600,000. And so we were really excited to explore opportunities on how we can help enhance optimal health for all residents here in not only Elgin, but within the Central Texas area. Our mission is to invest in actions that help promote and advance health equity. And health equity is when individuals, when residents have no barriers and are given the opportunity, fair and just opportunity, to access resources for them to reach optimal health. So I'm really excited about this collaboration with city, with county, with nonprofits, to see how we can all work collaboratively together to promote health and well-being. So thank you for giving me this platform, and I look forward to continue to work with Elgin and the Central Texas community. Thank you.
And if we could take a few minutes to do a photo with Abina and with our staff. Elizabeth is here tonight, and Christina Marzak, our Main Street Manager. Of course, this is a huge project for the downtown district, so if you guys, you probably need to get up and stretch your legs if we can.
I just want to repeat again, Amy, to make sure Ben understands, this is over a half a million dollars that St. David's Foundation has already spent or committed to the City of Elgin. It's been absolutely crucial to develop our parks. As council knows, we started this particular project on a whim of knowing we didn't have enough money to do Block A. And this money is going to put us over the edge, as Amy said, of not only being able to do Block A, but now we're going to spill into B, and we're going to be doing other things. So it's just a huge advantage to us, and we appreciate, I didn't know you had 70 million, though. We'll keep up the pressure. But it's, it really is, we're doing a lot of things here. Taxpayers are funding a lot of things, but this is a great example about how help from a foundation like this enables us to build something way better than what we thought we were going to build. So, thank you and the foundation.
And I meant to clarify the timeline. So we are very much on time. The Studio 1619 is continuing, moving forward with plans. Historic Review Board is holding a special meeting to look at some materials, recommendations from them this week. We are slated to go out for bid in March, and you would be seeing a contract to award in April, and we would break ground in May. That's the current timeline. So, but I know you also have an agenda item, so just when, whatever needs to come next, we did want to get a picture.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve, so we can get on with the photo.
The resolution is presented.
Yes.
It's been moved in second to approve. And we'll start with Joy.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Allen, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes. Fashan, yes.
Thank you so much, Tom. So if we can just take a few minutes, folks gather in front of the map, and I'll get a picture of everybody for the career.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 16, Article 2, weeds, bald growth, and unsanitary conditions for Vice Code of Ordinance of the City of Elgin, repealing all other ordinance and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the amending ordinance we spoke about earlier in the public hearing with some minor updates and changes to our weeds and tall grass ordinance. But I think the one significant issue for councils, I said before, is under the present ordinance, if you receive a notice of violation from the city, or whatever decision you think the staff has made relative to enforcing this ordinance, if you want to appeal that decision, then you need to go before the Board of Adjustments. You know, from a management procedural standpoint, operations-wise, we feel it's more effective to have those appeals go to the city manager. The Board, I think the commission discussed it, and it's fair, I think, it's fairly understandable why they may have had some hesitation and recommended against that part, is because the basic concept of the Board of Adjustments is to give citizens an opportunity to appeal any, or not any, but a lot of staff decisions to an independent group. So if you have a system where the staff decision gets appealed just to the city manager, it can imply it's just the staff reaffirming their own decision. However, in this case, what I'd say is to keep in mind that when it comes to weeds and tall grass, it is a problem from a timing standpoint with getting some folks to respond in timely manner. So, basically, you've got to remember, before you're in violation, it's 24 inches? How tall is it?
It's 12 inches.
12 inches. So your grass goes to 12 inches. You get a letter from the city, then on receipt of that letter, you have 10 days to abate that issue. And in some cases, if people call us, you know, sometimes that can stretch to 12 or 14 days, we'll give them time. But then if you're going to appeal it on top of that to the Board of Adjustments, it typically takes us a month to get the Board of Adjustments meeting together. Is that right, David?
Around that time period, yes.
Because if you remember, Board of Adjustments triggers an advertisement, setting of a public meeting, notice to the neighbors, all of those kind of things. So our thinking is, you know, that can be a situation where from the time you are in violation of the ordinance, it could be six weeks before there's a final decision rendered by the Board of Adjustments, whereas if the city manager, you could just act quicker. So, follow what I'm saying? So, that's where our recommendation comes from. But, so the ordinance as presented includes that staff recommendation. So if the council is so inclined to change the system to those appeals going to the city manager, then it would be to adopt this ordinance as presented, the motion would be. If you accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, then I think the motion would just be appropriate to be that, approve the ordinance with the changes recommended by the Planning Commission.
How many appeals do we see in a six-month period?
For weeds?
Very few. I mean, again, I think that's a good point. It's not like, well, it's kind of hard to dispute whether your grass is too high or not. I think it, I'm trying to think, I've maybe, I don't know, have we ever done one of those with the Board?
Since Code of Forces been over in Development Services, we've had none.
I've certainly had people call me and want to talk about their individual situation. And of course, city manager, I guess we'd have the authority to grant that appeal. But, yeah, that's a good point. It's a very rare occurrence if ever.
And it's only the appeal around the tall grass?
Right, right. This is part of this, that appeal is part of this ordinance. If you filed such an appeal, it would only be relative to what this ordinance, or what this section of the code requires.
Is there an appeal or a step beyond the city manager or beyond the Board of Adjustments?
No, that's part of the system, is that for typical appeals that go before the Board of Adjustments that have to do with building and development, that is really their function, that they act independently of the staff or the council, whatever decision they make is final. If we went to city manager, though, it would be final, but then, I guess theoretically, anybody can come to the council and appeal a decision to the city manager, I suppose, whether that's spelled out or not.
Well, if we went that route, would it need to be spelled out?
You could spell it out that way, that could appeal to the city council beyond the city manager.
You're adding another two weeks on top of that.
Yeah, because then you're going right back to the timeframe for the Board of Adjustments.
Well, and again, And of course, city manager, I guess we'd have the authority to grant that appeal, but yeah, that's a good point. It's a very rare occurrence if ever.
And it's only the appeal around the tall grass?
Right. This is part of this, that appeal is part of this ordinance. If you filed such an appeal, it would only be relative to what this ordinance, or what this section of the code requires.
Is there an appeal or a step beyond the city manager or beyond the Board of Adjustments?
No, that's part of the system is that for typical appeals that go before the Board of Adjustments that have to do with building and development, that is really their function, that they act independently of the staff or the council, whatever decision they make is final. If we went to city manager, though, it would be final, but then, I guess theoretically, anybody can come to the council and appeal a decision to the city manager, I suppose. Whether that's spelled out or not.
Well, if we went that route, it would need to be spelled out.
You could spell it out that way, that could appeal to the city council beyond the city manager. Now you're adding another two weeks on top of that.
Yeah, because then you're going right back to the timeframe for the Board of Adjustments.
Well, and again, that's where we're coming from. We do hear complaints. You know, the reality is typically, we're not sending a letter to somebody when they're exactly 12 inches. It usually overgrows. Then the response, and we do try, you know, typically we'll have folks come in at the 10th day and say, "Look, my brother-in-law's coming next week," so we try to work with those folks. So we do already have a situation where you're probably in violation of the ordinance and yet it's three, four more weeks before your grass gets cut. So it's another thing that we rarely have ever truly cite people that have to go to court. We're always trying to work with them, but we also, late in the last few years, we've really tried to tighten up that timeframe, just because if you play that out a couple times, that means you only have to mow your grass twice in the summer, you know, something like that.
So there hasn't been any appeals about grass?
Not any filed to the Board of the BAW.
So then it doesn't seem to be an issue.
Again, I think it's solely about, you know, the optics of citizens should, you know, virtually all these, we do have opportunities for citizens to appeal any kind of decision like this. So I think it, that's why it's in the code to begin with, I think. But yes, it's a practical matter. This hasn't been a problem.
It seems to me that, you know, you would go to the Board of Appeals after you've exhausted all possible avenues. And chain of command certainly includes the city manager. So, you know, why wouldn't go from the citation to be, you know, challenged by the city manager?
Yeah, I guess we could do it that way, just insert, again, another level. If they don't like the city manager's decision, then they can appeal it. But again, it comes back to this timing issue.
Right, yeah.
You know, with most other code enforcement, to get the right answer, we often have flexibility to wait. That's where this issue is, is that timeliness is important for the city to be responsive.
I get that. I just, I just think that, you know, maybe, maybe there does need to be relief available if it can't get resolved through the chain of command. So I would, you know, save some sort of hybrid there.
So that goes back to my comment earlier about management and the practice of implementing the policy that the city council makes, or whoever. So I agree with you, and that's why I asked the question about is there an appeal beyond you, you know, that should be the city council? You know, so in my head, y'all put into practice what we put out there.
Well, then we can argue, there's a reason why we chose courts and commissions, and that way we don't have to do that.
Fair enough.
I would say that is the Board of Appeals' function, but it's also a relatively minor issue, I think, to send to them.
Can we do it hybridly?
Have the council put in there that the council, you can appeal the manager. I mean, look.
So we go to the city manager and then if that didn't happen, then?
Yeah, we could, we could put that in. That wouldn't be a problem.
That buys them another six weeks.
I think that's, that makes sense.
Probably that's. Just all the people with tall grass are in Sue's neighborhood anyway, so.
In all honesty, don't tell me how to move my lawn or went to, so.
No, it just seems like it's not really an issue. So why mess with it? I mean, change the ordinance about their weeds and let's move on. I don't know. I feel like if we get five public comments up here telling us about how they want to come tell us about their weeds weren't 12 inches high, maybe we'll discuss it then, but it just doesn't seem like, I just think the optics are worse, taking, you know, taking the Board of Adjustments, you know, I guess, authority away and giving it to the city manager, I think is worse optics-wise than it's really worth. So that's not an issue.
Yeah, and I would just say, staff doesn't have an objection to that. It's just, like I said, it's another, we consider all this just another cleanup recommendation made, but it's correct to say, this has not been a big problem for us either. So that would mean to adopt the ordinance as recommended by the Plan Commission, if you want to leave it as is, right, David?
Do you hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Recommended ordinance.
Recommended by the, the ordinance, sorry, the ordinance. Recommended by the Plan Commission.
Can I have a second? All right, let's begin with Mayor Proton.
Fraser, yes.
McShane, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Flain, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Motion carries. Uh, Jeff. Okay. The next one is an ordinance of the City of Elgin calling general election on May 6, 2023 for the purpose of elections. Certain city officials designating election precincts and polling places providing an early voting and election voting, election day voting, providing for performance or required administrative duties, making provisions for conduct of such election, certifying provision of required accessible voting systems at each polling place and providing for other matters relating to City of Elgin election.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. This is routine. Required ordinance we pass prior to every election. It's simply a formality calling the election for May 6.
I make a motion.
So, questions, though? By making the motion, does this solidify the voting location?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I'll bring it up again, that I think having to close the RIC Center for two weeks is not my first choice. And so, like, anyways, is there, I looked at the dates and there's only one city council during that time, and there's a HRB meeting during that time. There's no EDC meeting. So I guess my question is, could the elections happen in this room and then we skip either the May 2nd meeting, or because there's five Tuesdays in May, we just have back-to-back meetings?
Yeah, the short answer is too late to do that, but I do want to say this. The staff is very interested in having that conversation about changing the voting location from the RIC Center. But frankly, we felt it was too late in the game to try to change that now. And so we'll be engaging that conversation with council after this May 6 election, but frankly, the council did a whole lot of work in changing that location. Anyway, it would, it would be a lot to change it now. I don't even think we can now.
So we have to work in conjunction with the county. They came and they looked, so it's.
So when is the next election? Just so we can get ahead of it. Well, sorry.
November.
November.
It is November, then?
Always.
There will be election. Well, again, that's why we're, we're kind of waiting for this election to come and go, and then we're going to have that conversation.
Okay.
And we're, I'll just say we're glad, we know one councilman supports moving it from the RIC Center, so that's good. That'll fit with our discussion.
Sure.
Hello, mayor and council. I just wanted to provide an update from Travis County. City of Mayor has elections in November, and so because of that, they are going to move forward with trying to find a voting location in the Travis County limits for early voting. I know that was, that has been requested in the past, and so I've spoken with Travis County and they said that they might need some help from y'all. We're looking at possibly ACC as the location for early voting, because of right now, we have the election day, of course. So just be on the lookout for an email from me if we need help. I think Travis County's reaching out to them first, and then they said if, that they need assistance from you all, I'll be sure to let you know. So, thank you.
Well, General, just to be clear, typically, the Travis County side of Elgin went to Maynard to vote, that's what you mean?
Correct.
And so since Maynard has moved their elections to November, there won't be a polling place in Maynard.
That's correct.
For this May 6 election.
That's correct.
For Travis County residents. So you're saying where this isn't about in the future, this is right now with this election. They're still trying to find their location.
Well, I'm hoping that after this, that they realize.
I know that, but I just want to be clear, we're not, this is an immediate issue.
Sure, yes. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
So we've had a motion by Callahan. Do we have a second?
Chuck did.
Oh, okay. You asked a question, so that threw me off. Okay, we'll move in a second. Begin with Callahan.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShane, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Flain, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda is Hometown Heroes. We have Charlotte Thomas, who's going to come and present her proposal to the council.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Charlotte Thomas. I'm a native Elginite. All of my supporters left, I guess the meeting ran too long. But Carl from the BFW had to go back to work, but Chuck is aware and the mayor's aware. What I'm proposing is a Hometown Heroes veterans, trying to get my thing straightened out. Hometown Heroes veterans banner. And the purpose for this is for us to honor, for Elgin to honor the veterans and all servicemen and women and their families, giving them something to look at for the deceased members or the living members to say, "We thank you." We always say, "We thank you for your service," but what other way to show that we thank you really for your service? This would be something that the families would order, and what we're suggesting is that they would be placed on Main Street, North Avenue C, and Dildy. And if you've served in any branch of the military, the Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, National Guards, Coast Guard, and has an honorable discharge, and this is our honor system, that we would ask you to purchase one. The cost right now we're looking at is less than $100, but it is based on whether we have a labor cost from the city, and we're hoping that. So, and the flags would be about, like I said, the whole cost of everything would, right, this time would be about $100. That's also hoping that we can use the same hardware that we currently have for the flags, like the Merry Christmas, the flags that we currently have. And I know that we have two sizes from research. Some are 48 inches long and some are 60, so we would need to get that information. The veteran would provide a picture, be it in uniform or not in uniform, and we would take it from there and get everything ordered. The suggested times are negotiable, of course, but we would like to have them hung around Flag Day, in June for Flag Day, and definitely in November for Veterans Day. The BFW went with the storm last week, the BFW did not get to vote on it, as Chuck knows, but they are scheduled to vote on it tomorrow. The, trying to go over everything. I think that's all the information I have. If you have any questions for me?
I do. If, if there are families who cannot afford that, are you setting up somewhere where citizens can donate to it so we can make sure?
Yes, yes, we are. And the other part is Hometown Heroes, if they have lived in Elgin at any point in their lives, if they went to school here and now live in Europe, they are still eligible for the program.
How many potential banners are we talking about? I don't know how many the city.
Yeah, I think that's, I guess I'm just saying it's not so, just to be clear, what you're asking the city to do is just hang the banners.
Yes.
And that who's on there, what their picture is, whether they got an honorable discharge.
As long as they have an honorable discharge.
That's all you, you all are going to handle that. And, but as she said, it's correct, our, can learn the hard way, our banners are different sizes in Saratoga or Lee Dildy.
Well, our street hardware are different sizes from what I've been told.
I would just, yeah, and I would just say my reaction is, we really don't want to have to do new hardware if we can keep from that.
Right, we try not to.
So if you, but, but we have banners that we hang on both of those, so I think as long as those are coordinated with the staff and Amy, that shouldn't be a problem. And I don't know that we can say that we've ever had a banner up on every street pole that we could, so even how many is available, we'll just have to figure that out.
I will be glad to have community services work with folks to figure out some sort of workable operational plan upon council's direction, if you would like to have me do that.
I guess the reason why I'm asking the question is, I mean, I think this is a great idea. The potential to have more interested than we have hardware available is my concern.
So I think we'd want to talk about that before, you know, I think you're right, we need to get a number.
That's why I want to get a number.
In both our minds, before we start selling them. You know, these have been very popular and done in a lot of different communities, and I would just say that while it's not difficult, hanging these banners is labor-intensive, so it is, just for my guys, I want to say, it would be a big contribution, the city to be willing to do this, but, but I think we clearly could, and I think as Amy said, we just need to interact with the staff and we'll need to get the public work staff involved, too, and I'm sure we can figure it out. And I'd also say, too, one of the things that we, I'll just say, that we've tried to do as a city is have more and more banners. We have ones that go up, I think, at least a quarter every time, so our goal is frankly, to have banners up all the time, so time schedule and all that, we'll have to work that out, too. I assume we agree, there's, there's a number of different times a year we could honor veterans, so, so we can figure something out, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. As of now, there, we are, if we decide to do it, if it's voted on, we're the first city in the state of Texas to have started.
Is that right?
Yes.
Well, that's good, I didn't know that. I, my dad's on one of my hometowns in Ohio, they're not, they're fairly common up there. Well, that's great.
I went and saw them in Tennessee, but so far, there's no state, no county or no city in Texas that has them up yet.
We like being first, so we'll claim that, too. Well, it's perfectly fine for y'all to vote on if you want, just to direct the staff.
All right, so what I need is a motion to direct city staff to work with Ms. Thomas in order to get this moving and going.
Make that motion. Chuck, you're up.
Okay. It's been moved in second, we'll begin with Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShane, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Flain, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Okay, the last one, number five. A request of council to begin discussion on revising and amending the current city code of ordinance pertaining to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, or garage apartments.
Yes, thank you, mayor. This was something that I requested to be put onto the agenda tonight. I've had a few residents in Ward 1 come to curtailing our code of ordinances as they pertain to accessory dwelling units. I just wanted to begin that conversation and hopefully get staff in a direction of reviewing it and. and hopefully get staff in a direction of reviewing it and amending it to allow for different things other than just garage apartments.
Right. When Arthur and I talked about this, shared with him that this is an issue that has come up periodically to staff and are, for whatever reason, I'm not sure, it's just an old, it's just been in our ordinance forever, but currently, the only type of dwelling unit you can put in your backyard has to be a garage apartment. It literally has to be built on top of a garage. So standalone building, oh, we got folks that have plenty of room and yards. We haven't been able to work with them in that regard. So the staff agrees that we're kind of outdated behind. These type uses are more and more common these days. But what I would say is, as always, it's not quite as simple as it sounds. There's a lot of different, how do they get access? How, what happens to the property? You know, it's another example of something that, my mom's ill and I want to put her in this house, and that's all fine, but what happens when I sell the house? Is it a separate unit? So there are some detailed issues we're going to have to walk through. So what we talked about was, I think the right approach is staff to start that process, to make an initial recommendation, take that to the Planning Commission, have the Planning Commission review it, and then make a recommendation, we'll bring that to council. If that's, that are the plan. So, I mean, like, like everything.
On that, right.
Well, I don't know. It depends how long it takes. We should be able to get to something to them in the next month or so, I think. And, you know, it depends how long they can, how much conversation they can have. At the same time, I would say, you know, if individual council members have any specific recommendations or ideas they'd like us to look at in that process, the sooner we can get that input, the better.
I think it's a great idea, but in doing my research, I know that if we're not real careful, things could go real bad, real quick. And so I'm perfectly fine with it, as long as we have a good foundation with our code enforcement for those. The nuclear family has changed, right? And so we all have to see that and move forward with that. I just want to make sure that the codes are pretty crystal clear.
Right.
So we don't turn into a bunch of broken-down little huts everywhere. For lack of a better term.
All right. So I, so I'll make a motion directing staff to begin researching and compiling recommendations for council in regards to accessory dwelling units.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Gibson, yes.
Clayne, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kuznovsky, yes.
Motion carries. We don't have an executive session. So now we move it to announcements.
No, Amy made enough announcements tonight.
And she's coming back, see?
Certainly, it, folks need to be filling out the TDEM survey. If you had property damage, if you had significant damage of any amount, please help out your community, county, and state of Texas by doing that quick survey online. And all the programs that the city has put into place, again, those are on the website and hard copy, bilingual printed copies are available at advocacy outreach, the Elgin Rec Center, and the library. And I am glad to provide copies, you know, if you've got a place that you would take them to help get them in the hands of the general public, so that we're making sure that folks know about the waived permits, the delayed meter inspections, and the tree and limb removal. We've fielded a variety of questions about the limb removal, and there is a new graphic up today to help folks, you know, folks understand their options in terms of how to place that brush so that you're not blocking sidewalks or driveways, and, and so that you hopefully put it out so that it's as efficient as possible when Public Works comes around to do the collections. So there's your Winter Storm Mara recap. And do come out on Thursday night for SIP shop and stroll. It's the Love of Elgin, Love is in the Air SIP shop, and there is a significant number of fun and cool things happening in addition to a regular SIP shop night. So make sure you're downtown Thursday.
And then on the 11th is the Project Celebration Dinner Dance. They have some tickets left that they're trying to sell. So if you want to partake in that, it's a fun night to help with the seniors on graduation night. I can get you in touch with somebody who's selling tickets.
All right, any more announcements?